So, good evening everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Laura Lynn Wyatt. I am the General Manager of the Stallion Springs Community Services District. And we are here this evening. We are going to learn a little bit about what it's like to be a special district in the state of California. What special districts comprise of, how they're funded, and also share with you some of the concerns that we have regarding our police department here in Stallion Springs. So, we're going to start with a little informational video. Special districts are the smallest, most accessible form of government. There are thousands of special districts in the state of California and 164 in Kern County. Only five districts in the state have police departments. Two of those five are right here in Tehachapi, Bear Valley Springs, and Stallion Springs. Most special districts throughout the state provide one or two services to a community, such as water, park and recreation, sewer, healthcare, or fire protection. Stallion Springs is a unique special district in that it operates eight departments. Special districts are funded by charging fees for services provided, such as water, sewer, or trash. They also receive a small portion of property taxes allocated by the county, and funds from special assessments or taxes approved by voters. They do not receive any income from state sales tax or gas tax. In some cases, additional funding can come from grants or donations.
Hello, everybody. It's Gary Crowell, the Chief of Stallion Springs Police Department. I just want to take the time to talk about our ballot measure that is in August of this year. In small communities like ours, the police department plays an essential role in maintaining public safety, building community trust, and responding quickly to emergencies. While larger cities may debate reforms or restructuring, our local force remains a trusted and deeply integrated part of our daily life.
Being in Stallion Springs, we do have a personal relationship with the officers. They're part of our family. They're not just policemen.
When they come into the store, we just start talking to everyone as just the residents besides their just being police officers.
I've been in Stallion Springs for 32 years. I've raised kids here, and I was always thankful they had an eye on my children and the community and the teenagers and the people.
Preserving the police department ensures that our town has immediate access to trained professionals who understand the unique needs of our residents. Our officers know the people that they serve, often knowing the officers and the community by name, which fosters both accountability and compassion.
There are family men that provide a service beyond being policemen.
People call for help with heart attacks, medical problems, domestic disputes, hostage, you wouldn't believe, suicides, someone trying to commit suicide. They're there. They are there, and they manage it. They don't fail.
Anytime we've had a situation around the church, we've always had response time, I mean even within five minutes. And so, we know we can count on them to show up, and even if we had someone in crisis.
This community-based model of policing helps prevent crime through early intervention, builds strong community relations through youth and schools, enhances coordination with local services. Rather than disbanding or outsourcing services, we should invest in increased training, modernizing our equipment, and community engagement programs that enhance the department's ability to serve us effectively.
And if they don't have the manpower, if they don't have the right equipment, it puts them at risk. It may put the residents at risk because they can't do their job properly.
Other police departments have computers in their cars. Our CSD cannot afford, and our funding currently cannot afford, to buy computers for our officers. We need to be able to attract new officers, young officers, who are interested in growing their careers, not taking a position here for a few months and then moving on because it simply does not pay enough.
Currently, I have five friends that have lost their husbands, and response time's important, obviously, when you're living alone and older. The thought of them not having that resource is not good.
If we did not have local Stallion Springs police, and we had to rely on other agencies to come and help us, we're looking at a longer response time.
It might take hours before you get another agency out here to deal with your situation or issue you're having.
We're safe because they're here, and we don't have the level of crime you see in the big cities. But that's because they're here.
The goal is not just to preserve the department, but to continuously improve it so it remains responsive, fair, and deeply connected to the people it protects. Thank you.
Just think about the large departments in Kern County. Okay, give me an example. Bakersfield PD, right. Bakersfield PD, an officer responds. Generally, they have, when they go on duty, 10-8 we call it, they probably have 20 to 30 calls that are pending. There's a big priority list where they go. The officer responds. If they take a report, they do initial report, it goes into a detective. So, if it's like a rape, homicide, or burglary, anything that might be of a higher classification, it has to go to a detective. For the smaller agencies, they don't have the luxury of having a detective. Believe it or not, Tehachapi does have one, but generally, they do the same thing. So, again, when you're hiring an officer, you're getting the experience. You're getting the officer who has to handle everything from a dog barking call all the way to a homicide. That comes at a cost. We would like to get to a point where, obviously, we would like to have young officers be malleable to our needs and your needs, but again, that takes time. We have to have full training officers. There's a lot of things that go in there, and I can't guarantee that we may ever get there, but it's something that we always want to look at. So, again, you're looking at the competing agencies. How are we going to get some officers who are interested of moving? And you have all these other agencies that are available that are also hiring. The location, again, Stallion Springs. Is it a professional organization? Again, when we have poor staffing and the issues that we've already talked about, sometimes that might be a deterrent. We've talked about some of the technology that we lack. I have had people who've come on ride-alongs who are interested, want to come work for us, and then they start talking about our reality, our pay, the technology, the staffing. And then they tell me, "Sounds like a great place, and I've heard wonderful things about you, but I can't do it." That's what we are working with currently. Again, we have no incentives. At this time, we've had variations of signing bonuses, but you've heard those large numbers to $25,000 to $50,000, as well as college education. There's no way I will be ever able to do that. But the General Manager, I have talked about having some small incentives, and we are working upon those things. But again, it comes at a cost. All the money that comes in starts getting whittled away. And then you have retention. The concerns of there's no upper movement, mobility, because we only have a chief, a sergeant. Sometimes, we have a senior officer, depending on staffing levels. Again, those comes with incentives of pay. Often, departments have night differential if you're bilingual. All those little things are extra pay that we just can't pay for, that our other agencies are doing. So, again, we're trying to come up with a way to fix some of these issues, but with the current funding source that we have that's existing, it's an impossibility. Next one, please. Would you like to do it, or would you like?
Okay, so at the beginning, I shared with you, we have a name assigned to us by the Kern County Elections Department now, Measure A. So, what is a measure? It's a voter-approved ballot measure, also sometimes referred to as a Prop 218. To pass, it must be with a 2/3 majority vote, or 66.7% in favor for it to pass. An additional per parcel, per year special tax for police of $275 annual. That's what Measure A is asking for. We build on your property tax bill. Of course, most of you know you pay twice a year, so that looks like about $137.50 additional on each bill than you're paying now. Next slide, Jason. Thank you. No CPI included. I think everybody knows Consumer Price Index, right? You hear about it all the time, inflation. And that's something that, in general, is a struggle for a small community services district like this. Just to derail a little bit off-topic, I will share with you that last year, to have our community swimming pool open to the community, the district lost $4,000. Why? Increased cost of chemicals, electricity, lifeguard training, etc. So, inflation, it's constant. It's everywhere, right? You guys know. I mean, you're going to buy a dozen eggs these days, right? So, no CPI. The Board of Directors, under the advisement of the Public Safety Committee's findings, they decided that there would be no CPI built into this. Estimated to generate an additional $650,000 per year for police services. By law, this special tax can only be used for police services. We can't take and use this money for any of the other departments within the district by law. All the money from this parcel tax stays in Stallion Springs for police services. I just said that. Man, I must have done this a time or two now. Locally funded, locally controlled, no money is given to the state or the federal government. It stays right here in Stallion Springs. The money, because of the way the property tax rolls, even if this measure passes, we will not see actual dollar bills until the 26, 27 fiscal year. Next slide, Jason. So, a lot of you have been seeing, and we've got some on the table over here. We encourage participation. The Public Safety Committee came up with a little community questionnaire, if you will. And we started floating this around just so we could kind of get a feel for how people viewed not only the police department in Stallion Springs, but our job performance as a community services district. At the time PowerPoint was created, we had received 108 surveys back. 32 people said, "No, they would not support a tax." 76 people said, "Yes, they would support a tax." And 106 out of 108 people said they feel safe in Stallion Springs. Let's circle back to the video just a little bit, and later, I'm sure you'll hear from Mr. Severson, but you feel safe because they're here. That's a strong message. I love that message. So true. Next slide, Jason. So, what will the funds be used for? And then I'll go ahead and pass that back to Chief for this slide.
So, going back just for a second. In January of this year, when we were hit with the news that we were going to lose one officer at that time, let alone getting the bad news that we're going to lose a second, we then created a Public Safety Committee. And they are a group of community members like yourself, I believe we had about 14, that did a lot of fact-finding and got all the data for us to do this presentation here today. Some of you are amongst this group here today. So, again, some of you look like, "How do we come up with these numbers? What do we need?" I can't express how dire the situation is, and this is the lowest number we can go with. There has been some rumors, like I mentioned earlier, that have been thrown out, which were just conversations that happened in the committee. And again, that was fact-finding at that time. That was nothing that was factual for this presentation. I want to get away, and I want to be very clear. This is not going to fund seven officers. I would love for that to happen. Now, seven officers is basically a model if we were to have 24-hour coverage, and even then, everything would have to kind of align. Really, what we're trying to get is the staffing of four, maybe five people. Have a secretary. Currently, like I mentioned, and I was being facetious, I am a secretary. I have to write my own letters. I have to send background investigations to other departments. I have to give some items to the district attorney's office. I have no one else. Our front-office staff has been so inclined to assist us in the years past, and they are not trained because it's confidential information. Again, this is nothing that has changed. This is things that have been always going on. Unfortunately, we have not told you this story until now. And I can't tell you the reason really why that is, but I'm just here to say that we as a community with this team, as well as staff from the Community Service District, got that data to look at what number would be realistic to being passed as a tax measure. Again, with the CPI, we heard from feedback from some fine folks like yourself, and we heard that that was automatically going to be a no. And again, this is all about transparency. We want you to be part of the process. When this passes, I would like for you, the community, to create a Public Safety Committee that is going to look at our expenditures. There's nothing, no smoke and mirrors here, folks. This is the bottom line, lowest we can go. No CPI included. We got out of that because, again, people are afraid of the economy. I understand that. But they heard about, you know, could there be potential increases from year to year? So, we got rid of that. So, the $275 is per parcel, per year. It is going to be used for the police department only. It does not go to the state of California. It does not go to the federal government. It does not go to the county in Kern. All the money from this tax measure goes to the police department, locally funded, locally supported. Again, at this point, we are trying to preserve our police department. We need to purchase essential tools and equipment to do our job so I can do my job safely. I really hurt inside because I stay up at night just thinking, "Am I doing the best I can?" And the fact of the matter is, I'm doing with what I have. My officers doing what they have. But it's still, it's not really acceptable. We are trying to ensure that we have coverage for our community. Again, with this passed, it's going to generate roughly, for a total budget, $1.5 million. That's still $1 million less than Bear Valley. We're not asking for, you know, $5 million. We're asking for $639,000. But only you, our residents, can make that decision. Now, I'm going to ask you, how many officers do you think should be working for our department right now?
At least four or five.
At least four or five. How many do we have, sir?
Three.
Now, I've vasculated on this for quite some time, and the reason why I have not addressed this issue is because I'm concerned with officer safety. But like I just mentioned, there's no way around that. It is what it is. Currently, I have two officers, myself included. I can't tell you how dire this situation is. I can't continue going the way I am, nor my sergeant. I have one part-time officer. We are at a critical point, folks. It's either we fund it, and you have some source of law enforcement, because it's not about me. It's not about any of my staff, and I have heard some, I get some rumors, that they're voting "no" because they don't like me, or someone from my staff. If you don't, please, it's not about my personality or anything else. And again, if really, if I'm the issue, let me know on a large scale, and I'd be more than humble to bow out. But please, don't make a decision for personality issues. Make the decision because it's for you. This funding can go to, hopefully, have a conversation for contracting services if we're not that model. But with $810,000, that's an impossible thing to do right now. The Sheriff's Department will not come out here. There's also rumors amongst the Sheriff's Department that this is never going to pass, and they're going to take over services. That's happening amongst themselves currently. But again, right now, we cannot afford a contract with the current budget. Just for a moment, I just want, and again, I have to be factual, but I just want to put it in perspective. If you lose the department, you'll no longer have vacation house checks. You won't have an officer who'll know you by name, Laura. Steve, Brett, Terry. You won't have a conversation with an officer when you want to. Right, Larry? You're not going to have that personal service. You're not going to have officers going to the bus stop in the morning, or in the afternoon. We're not going to be able to tell you, "You left your garage open at 2:00 a.m. because you were busy and your wife was on you." That is the service that we're trying to provide for you, and we want to continue to provide for you. But again, I can't express how dire the situation is. And again, I don't like to say my staffing levels because it's sad and it's embarrassing, but it's a fact. But I wish this was overflowed with people here. There not. But only you can try to pass this, and I want you to make the best educated decision what is for you and your family. But remember, what's lost is going to be lost and may never be recovered ever again if this doesn't pass. It's that dire. I can't go at the pace, nor my sergeant. He's given me five years more than he promised he was going to give me. And we are actively working day-to-day to keep you safe and are trying to recruit the best we possibly can. And I just ask to get the facts, please. If you hear people going out in the community and putting out misinformation, encourage them to come to one of these meetings. We have two left. We don't have much time. We have roughly 38 days until the ballots are mailed out. That's all I ask. Just give us the opportunity to give you the facts so you make the best decision that you possibly can. But please, don't make it about me, or anyone from my staff. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to trade with Chief here, and he's going to take a wired mic. So, the last slide there stated, and I want to reinforce this, ballots will be mailed out by the Kern County Elections Department on July 28th. Now, we all know that the mail goes all the way around the moon and back before it actually shows up in our mailbox, right? So, I would estimate right around the first week of August or so, you'll see the ballot in your mailbox. You can mail it back to the Elections Department, or the Elections Department does have a permanent ballot drop box at the Kern County Library at downtown Tehachapi on Green Street. So, you can put it in there as well. Cut-off is 8:00 p.m. on the 26th of August, and then the Elections Department will start counting our ballots. I've been told that that could be a little bit of a process, although it's not a busy election time. I think there's one other ballot measure in Kern County, so they may have a couple to count. So, we're not going to know the night of August 26th, right? But trust me, Chief and I will be hitting the refresh button on the Elections Department site. Something that I wanted to address, and I've received a couple of questions, and I don't know if the gentleman happens to be in the room. I did receive a phone call yesterday while I was in our board meeting, and I haven't had a chance to return his call yet. So, I apologize if you're in this room, and I will get to you as soon as possible. But the question was posed to me, "Why are the ballots going out to all the registered voters and not just the parcel owners if the special tax is attached to each parcel?" So, here's the difference. We have assessments. Assessments are for infrastructure improvements. If you guys remember, about a year ago, we went out to you and we asked for a road assessment. That was a per parcel vote. This is a special tax, and so the way that the law is written, when it is a special tax, a ballot goes to every registered voter within the district's boundary of Stallion Springs. Okay? And that's election law. That's the way it's been written for many years, but that's the answer to that question. That's why, in this particular case, because this is not infrastructure, this is a service. It falls under special tax law, and each registered voter within the boundary will get a ballot. So, I hope that that answers that question. But now, we're going to open it up to you guys. This is your time, okay? So, Chief has got a wired mic. I've got a wireless one. I'm going to come to you. If you have a question, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Chief, relative to the rumors about the Kern County Sheriff's Department taking over the services if we don't pass the special measure tax, how would they do that? Where would they get the budget?
Well, as you know, Tehachapi-
I mean, if we don't have it, where would they get it?
As you know, Tehachapi has a very certain rumor mill. Stallion and Bear Valley, and everyone has their own, and you can only imagine law enforcement has their own. Again, they don't have the facts. Everyone knows about this. The chief, all the chiefs in Kern County, the sheriff, everyone knows what we are currently going through. Officers, deputies, they're going to talk. They don't have the facts. They just hear little rumors themselves and then kind of act on that. As of right now, again, the county as a whole, and this is coming from very high-up people in the county, they are in a $9 million deficit, possibly up to $50 million deficit. And that's because overtime, right now, there's no overtime, believe it or not, with the Sheriff's Department, because they're like half a million, I think it's half a million dollars over, something along those lines. I don't know how they get past that, but they've actually told their staff there's no overtime. What would that really look at? We can't afford a contract, like I said. With that, the staffing has improved with the Sheriff's Department, but let's say hypothetically, this doesn't pass and we don't, I don't even like to put that bad juju out there. Now, we have roughly 3,500 people that are now going to put an additional drain on the county. Do you think that they're going to respond accordingly? We can't afford a contract which mandates that they have to have staffing out here. Again, that comes out of a caveat. Today, I was going to have a guest speaker who was going to talk about some of those issues. That guest speaker will be at the next town hall. I apologize for not being here today. Because again, like I mentioned, I can't tell you how dire the situation or a different perspective, because you could listen to me or the General Manager all day, or even people from the Kiddy. Again, you could say it's just one-sided. I'm telling you, this is coming all fact-based. But as of it sits right now, to answer your question, we cannot, we can't afford a contract, unless it's maybe one or two officers, which you have already, but then you're not going to have those other things like we discussed, that personal service. We cannot have a 24-hour model. And again, Bear Valley is going through a similar process such as us with their funding levels. They are at critical staffing levels as well. They quoted them $2.5 million. Now, I won't steal their thunder, but there's probably going to be some information provided here today about what they have quoted us if we were to go to that model. And I'm here again to tell you, it's significantly more than what we're paying now, and it's significantly more even if we were to pass this measure, but we can't afford it currently.
Is there- Is there, um, along that line, is, can they impose that on us?
No.
Or is that a choice? I mean, they can't jam, jam the cost into our tax structure without a vote or anything?
So us as a Community Services District, we get our governing powers by LAFCO. With that, that was underlying that the Community Service District has to have police coverage. So if it's us not here, there has to be an exploration of what that entails. Do we go to Bear Valley? Do we go to Tehachapi? Do we go to CHP? Whatever. When California City was having staffing issues roughly around two years ago, I'm going to estimate, don't quote me on that. I think it was about tw- two years ago. They contracted with the California Highway Patrol just for night services. And guess how much they would pay? They were charging Cal City for just to be available during the night for a month. Any guesses? Close, let, little, well, less, fifty thousand dollars a month for just eight hours. Again, we can start exploring those things. The Community Service District would be in a very tough situation because they would have to explore other options. Or would have to petition LAFCO to have that removed, though it would be at a significant cost. Which, again, we don't have that information. We are very optimistic that we are going to pass this. But at the same time, it's, we're kind of in unchar- uncharted waters. But again, with the current eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, and again, we all know it's, it's very hard. There's, there's no additional funding that's coming in as it is today. We have talked to our local, state, and federal partners, our lawmakers, people we all voted in office. And there's, there's nothing coming. The cavalry's not coming with money.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I think I saw a hand over here too, so don't be shy. Okay, I'll get right to you.
So I have several questions about the voting. You said it's only to registered voters in, is it in Kern County or is it in Stallion Springs?
It's just within the district boundary of Stallion Springs. Okay?
Wonderful. So if somebody lives in Los Angeles and owns a lot here, they don't get a, they, they don't get to vote. They shouldn't.
Yeah, not unless they're registered here.
Oh, okay. Great, great. I'd like to just say a general statement, and that is, the only thing that can possibly be more expensive than police is no police. We would not save any money. This is, uh, you know, just not a place to save money. So, uh, if I own a house and a lot and I'm a registered voter, do I get, that, does that appear on both tax bills?
Yeah, so there's, there's a little caveat to that. So some people, right, you move into Stallion Springs and you build this beautiful new house and then you look over and there's a pretty lot right next to you. You're like, I want to buy that lot. You know, I want that property too. I don't want somebody to build a house right there. Unless you petitioned the county of Kern and you did what's called a lot line adjustment. Meaning that combined all into one parcel, then there'd be one vote or one bill. In most cases, if you did not do a lot line adjustment, or you own multiple parcels on different streets around Stallion. Each parcel will have that on their property tax. I hope that was helpful. No, registered voters. So if you have one registered voter, right, and he owns four parcels in Stallion, he gets one vote, but four bills. Anything else, sir? You, okay, okay. I'm finally getting to you.
I want to add one thing.
You've been so patient, thank you.
So can I add one, one quick thing? So, um, our response time, how, how fast do you think, when we're on duty, of course? How fast do we generally get to a call? Would be a realistic goal. Five minutes? I hear five minutes, okay? Anyone else? What would you expect? Two minutes? You cheated, because you've been to many of these things, but yes. We, uh, we have, and I contacted Kern County Sheriff's Department. That's who gave us this data and who serves us with our dispatching services. Uh, we respond in two minutes on average for a call when we're on duty. Now again, when we're off duty and we're on call, that's obviously going to be extended probably fifteen, twenty minutes type of thing if we're here. Again, we are mandated that we're on, when we're working, we're on call. So again, that's, that's also very challenging. But, uh, there was a slide, several slides ago where Laura Lynn was so kind to talk. And how long ago was that? Would say it was probably four different slides ago. Twenty-six minutes ago. On average, that is what other agencies are taking to respond to your call for service when they're assisting us. Visual indicator here. Again, that's best case scenario. Just wanted to share.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. I personally would like to see a breakdown of the costs because they, they sound very low to me. Um, which I'm sure you'll agree. How many parcels do we actually have and how many are occupied?
I know the parcel number, it's roughly two thousand four hundred and forty-nine, so we'll just round it off to twenty-five hundred. Uh, I would say the vast majority are undeveloped, but I don't have the actual number. Uh, Laura Lynn, would you happen to have that number by any chance? So total parcels, two, two thousand four hundred and forty-nine.
Okay, my interest would lie in the unoccupied parcels. What is the incentive of a owner that doesn't live here to vote yes for this?
They really don't. I mean, we have some very large landowners that honestly, it's going to hurt their bottom line. I know one of them is currently trying to sell their property. I mean, again, I, I understand times are tough for everyone. Certainly if you have a little bit more money in your bank account, makes it a little bit easier, but I mean, it's, it's still a struggle. So, uh, those individuals generally don't, do not live here. But, yeah. So again, if they choose to register and, and they could, once again, because we've been doing several town halls and the word gets out, we can't change that.
It doesn't sound good because if the majority of the parcels are unoccupied and you already have residents that are voting against them, it sounds like a tough road to hoe.
Yes, sir. So if I could clarify that for you. If you own a parcel in Stallion Springs, but you live in Michigan, you don't get to vote. You're not a registered voter within the boundaries of Stallion Springs. So I just wanted to clarify that with you. They do not get a vote unless they are registered to vote within the district boundary of Stallion Springs. Of the registered vote. That's correct.
That's right.
And then if you think about it, think about the opposite. Think about i- if, if I lived in Idaho, but I happened to own a parcel in Stallion, I don't, I'm not going to vote. I'm going to vo- I'm going to vote on political ballot measures in Idaho. Where my voter registration is and where I live. Okay? So it's kind of, I know it's, it's a, but it's the way the law's written for a special tax.
Have we extrapolated these numbers to know what are, the number of votes that we need to pass the measure?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that figure, but I know it's sixty-six percent. Yeah, yeah. It does have to be sixty-six percent of those who vote. So it's hard to know what number until we know how many have voted. Well, this is the third one, fourth one? Yeah.
And again, we have to be, this is the government process per the Prop two eighteen that we talked about. This is not anything that the Community Service District came up with. This is unfortunately the regulations that we have to abide by by the State of California. I know it's really an uphill battle, but I truly have my faith in, in the voters. Uh, it's certainly going to be a challenge and even my, my colleagues think the same. Again, just remember, sales tax that you're paying in the city of Tehachapi, which is what, eight point five percent? You're, what's that? It pays for their government. Their sewer system, their water, their police department. We go there, we all do, myself included, pay that sales tax willingly because we have to. But you're helping fund their police department. Here, because we're a Community Service District, we're exempt from funding. All the gas tax that we have at our local gas station, we don't see a dime. We don't see a cent. We don't see a hundredth of a cent. The fu- the funding that came from the federal government with the Biden administration for infrastructure, Community Service District doesn't receive any of that money as well. And that's why we're fighting with our lawmakers to get our representation. Because again, all of us are having very similar problems. Again, mine's very unique because I'm one of five police departments. It is something that we probably should have told the narrative sooner, and I wish we could have. But again, I have the faith that we can get this passed and everyone sees the value of what we're trying to do. And again, it's not, it's not about me or my department. It's really about you investing in yourselves and being able to have some type of law enforcement services. Because again, if it's not our department, it should be someone else. Otherwise, you're gonna, you're going to rely on other entities, other law enforcement officers that are going to take in excess of thirty-two minutes to get to your emergency at 2:00 AM. Or right now.
Yeah, I got a quick que- question for you. On our property, you get two registered voter, mother and father. Does that count as one or two?
Yes.
Yes, if you are both registered voters within the county, you will receive two ballots. Okay? I'm going to go around the back here. I got a gentleman that's waiting.
So yes, if you have, let's say you have four registered voters in your home. That's four votes. It's whoever's registered in Kern County in Stallion Springs.
Uh, how many residents do we have in Stallion Springs? Do you know? Like how many people live here?
I've heard twenty-five to thirty-five hundred. It varies. We've had a lot of people come and go, so there, there's been a high turnover rate. I think the last census was like thirty-two hundred. So it's gone, it's been as low as like twenty-six, as high as thirty-two, and I've heard some as thirty-five. But it's just a lot of different and it's depending on when they're coming in. Uh, you know, right now, our population's higher because we have Woodward West open. So we have an additional roughly, you know, six to seven hundred people in addition to, um.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is if there was a creative way for anyone that lives here, not just property owners, to contribute to the police department because they're benefiting from having one. If there's any way that we could bring funds in from renters or other folks, I think it would be beneficial.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Did you want me to answer? Okay. To answer that, so we have a foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). Uh, they are actively looking for people to be a part of it as well. And what that nonprofit organization does is it brings in money that, in certain services. So for instance, you've heard about the issue with the pool. You want to change that reality, you can donate to the pool. But make it sure it goes to the foundation, but specifically say, pool, pool supplies or just the pool. Make sure you talk to the front office staff. But for the police department, uh, we just had this, uh, car show which brought in roughly four thousand dollars, I'm glad to say. That's the, I, sad to say that, but that's the biggest fundraiser we've ever had. But that's great because it's the great, best that we've ever had. So, uh, again, we want to continue doing those things. If it's a cent to having one of those events, that helps our bottom line. It helps us get the equipment. We recently were a recipient of a, a, a landowner who has no interest even in our community. But he gave us a generous donation of twenty-four thousand dollars, which went to our body cams. Believe it or not, that's how much that equipment costs. And there's other equipment that really is getting kind of antiquated and I'm on the gun right now to look at. So any of those donations that you choose or anyone in this room chooses, or even outside for those who are streaming, you have that ability to do that now. Or throughout the year. But again, we really do want to continue to, uh, have the opportunity to, to give donations to us. We've had National Night Out. Oftentimes, we're unable to do those things because what people oftentimes do not see is all those productions that we've done take a lot. So our front office staff get a lot of questions. Our parks and recreation work tirelessly, as well as the General Manager on this last event. You know, it was the General Manager's idea. I thought it was crazy. Uh, but it was something that was, that was needed and it was a great thing for our community. We got people out. People loved the cars. They were loving the music. That's what this community is about. But we want to continue doing those things. So there are those, the, the ability to do it today.
I was wondering about incentives. Since, um, salaries are lower, what incentives can there be to, to draw in more officers? And I was wondering if perhaps, um, you know, maybe retired officers could be targeted that are still young enough that want to work and have a couple of part timers. You know, to, so that you wouldn't be paying one full-time, you know, uh, officer and just, you know, like a twofer.
Good question. So there have been some people who've asked similar questions and the, the reality of it is really pensions. So we're a cow purge agency. So a lot of different agencies are within that system unless you are in a large metropolitan area or a large county. So for instance, like Los Angeles, I believe, has their own pension system. Uh, Kern County has their own pension system. Even then, there might be some exemptions or some stipulations that you can't because you're already a, you already have a retirement. So that becomes an issue. So what has been suggested, which I am very cautious of, is completely get rid of the, that, those benefits completely. That retirement system to do that, to basically survive. Well, that would mean that the whole staff would have to be that way. So that would mean our existing staff would have to go away. Because you can't have it, you can't have a cake and eat it too, basically. And we have explored that. Uh, there have been some changes. Uh, I think it's, some of them are, are being challenged in the courts currently, but overall, it's because of the, the retirement system. If you're a beneficiary of a retirement system, you're exempt from going to another agency.
Um, I just, I am curious, I'm, I mean, this is great. I just am curious about the long, you know, the long term. Is this sustainable, you know, for the future? Thinking about, you know, the next ten, twenty years from now and that additional tax that we're paying on our property. Um, if, you know, like we looked at the numbers, it's significantly less than Bear Valley or, you know. Is that, is this a sustainable option for like the long term? Or is a contract? I mean, I, I, I think there's a lot of benefits to having a local police here and I would love that. I just, I'm curious realistically if this is a long-term solution. You know, if in ten years from now, we're going to be looking at the same problem or five years from now even. So just, just curious about that.
Good question. So again, I don't have a crystal ball of what the future holds. What I can say is when it passes, it gives us that lifeline. We have talked, actually, we were approached by another agency and I could talk about it because it's open record at this point. Uh, Bear Valley did approach us and asked if there was a way, a path for us to do that. And there's off, and I want to make it clear that, that, that is not a possibility. And there's off, and I want to make it clear that that is not a possibility at this time. So don't let that rumor go out. We did explore those things, but when you have their officers who are making significantly more, and you have two boards, who's in control? There's a lot that goes into that. But the reality is, you know, at some point, I think there's going to have to be a realistic conversation of regionalizing, but again, it comes down to funding. You can't have one department that is at two point four million and have the other department eight point ten and have it balance out. So it's one of those things of, there's things that our elected officials have to go through, our general managers have to go through to really have those talks. Um, again, like I mentioned, Bear Valley is going through the same process. They're really looking at what we're doing because they want to try to get it passed as well. But again, you know, Tehachapi's having the issues as well. They're just in a better situation than we are. You know, Bear Valley's struggling, we're struggling. But in the future, I certainly would look at, there'd probably be a very good possibility at some type of regionalization. Now with that, it would have to go back to you, our community, to say that's what you want. But that's not anything that's on the table at this time. So again, this is the life preserver that we desperately need to just continue on, and then hopefully we've laid the groundwork to continue building on those things, to continue to have those services on a wide scale. Because again, you still have the Cummings, the Hills, and Fairview Ranch area, including Alpine Forest that have no coverage. I mean, again, those are non-contract areas. So again, those areas have expressed some interest of possibly outsourcing. You know, our desires not to upset the sheriff's department because they have helped us in such a way, but at the same time, we want to try to see if we can provide the best level of service we can.
My name's Bill Cyvison. Some or all of you might have gotten a letter from me recently. Um, there were some questions about, um, the voting and registered voters and whatnot. I spoke with the, um, elections department. It is going to registered voters, Kern County registered voters. Um, and that was important. If you live in Des Moines, Iowa, you're not a Kern County. If you live in LA, you're not a Kern County registered voters. Now, I have heard that there are some folks that have recently moved to Stallion, recently in the last several months, and maybe they were registered to vote wherever they came from. They've got till, I think it's August tenth, to register in Kern County. Just, if you know anyone, have them go to their website and, or give them a ring. Very nice people, and they'll, they'll help them out, get registered in Kern County. Someone was asking about how many households? No, registered voters. You have to be registered in Kern County.
No, we have to be registered.
No, I'm talking.
The only elections department that governs elections in our area is called the Kern County Elections Department. You have to register to vote with the Kern County Elections Department. In this case, you will also have to live within the district boundary to vote.
Yeah, yes, you can, you can go to Kern, to, I don't know the whole name of their website, but if you just search Kern Elections, you'll get their website, and, um, there's phone numbers you can give them a ring, and, um, and they'll help you out to make sure, you know, hey, am I registered in Kern County? Um, someone was asking about households. There's, uh, when I received the mailing list from, for registered voters in Stallion Springs, it's about twenty-four hundred-ish, but my household has five registered voters. Some have two, some have one. When you break it down into how many individual households have at least one, it's about eleven hundred and fifty, eleven hundred and something. Um, and again, it's when we vote, um, the elections department, it's sixty-six percent of the votes they get back, the ballots they get back. If all twenty-four hundred ballots are returned, we need sixteen hundred and one yeses. If it's only a hundred, we need sixty-seven yeses. Yes, it's an uphill battle, and I think it's meant that way because, I don't remember 218, but it's, you know, if you're going to start tax people, you know, you make it a little harder. Um, there was some talk about contracting with the sheriff's office. Um, before I get into that, um, I did speak with, um, Tehachapi's chief, Chief Stanland, and they can't help us. He gets it, he understands what we're going through. But Tehachapi Police is for the city of Tehachapi. They don't even patrol Golden Hills, which is right there. Um, I spoke with Sergeant Malloy, who's the commanding officer for the Kern substation in, um, for Tehachapi, the Tehachapi substation for the Kern Sheriff. Uh, they've got five deputies and two senior deputies, I think, and Sergeant Malloy is their, I guess they're commanding officer. And I asked him, if our police leave, or Tehachapi Police, they all go into Lotto, and they won, each of them won twenty million dollars, and they come in one day and go later. Is there something in the Kern Sheriff Organization, um, a directive, a policy, a procedure that says, oh, okay, we got to go start patrolling the city until they get their police back? No, there isn't. If our police leave, they are not going to come patrolling Stallion. On average, monthly, they, for the last two years, they've done a hundred and twenty-five service calls. Whatever it is, they've helped out a hundred and twenty-five of our fellow residents here in Stallion, on average, every month for the last two years. You ain't going to get that from the sheriff's office. You just not. If you call nine-one-one, the dispatcher down there in, um, the sheriff's dispatcher down there in Bakersfield's going to, okay, what's going on? Now, if it's an armed robbery, there's someone assault, there's, okay, your life's in danger? That's a priority one. There's five priorities, one through five. That's a one. Your life's in danger. Your neighbors, you see something going on in the driveway, and you know that, oh gosh, you know, they're going through a rough divorce, and it's really contentious, and the two are having a heck of an argument out there in the driveway, and you're worried it's about to go nuclear. So you call nine-one-one to try to get a deputy out. That's a priority four. Now, if it does go nuclear, oh, okay, now they'll come out, they'll react, and they'll drive from San Canyon. They patrol from Cameron down to Hart Flat. Five deputies, two senior deputies, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. So they're not going to get here until tomorrow. So what I want to do now is go through, I did speak with the, um, Director of Finance and Budget at the County Administrative Office. These are the folks that, when they get the money from the treasurer, but from the tax collector, they tibby it out. And I asked them to give me a real rough estimate, and make some assumptions, and give me a rough estimate, and I wanted to share the assumptions with you because I told him I would. But that's, in that letter, when I told you two and a half million, and then one point six million for ongoing, I didn't tell you what the assumptions were, so, because I said I would, I'll do that now. And I didn't ask him why he made these assumptions. Um, it was a late call, but these are the assumptions that he made to come up with that figure. We're going to have to pay a share of the academy. That's a hundred and forty-three thousand. One deputy is two hundred and twelve thousand, and that's health benefit salary. He assumed seven deputies. And I want to stop there for a moment. That was his assumption. The, kind of, some of the talk going around at some of the restaurants and at Evans', oh, the two seventy-five is going to get us seven officers. That's, no, the seven is an ideal, in a perfect world, you would have seven officers. It's an ideal business model to account for sick and vacation, blah, blah. It's completely separate. The two seventy-five, like, uh, Chief said, is probably going to get us four or five. He assumed seven deputies, that's, uh, a million four hundred and eighty-four thousand, one shift. You need one or two sergeants to manage the deputies, that's two hundred and eighty-two thousand. Need the signing bonuses for each of them, fifteen thousand per. I don't know why he said fifteen. Vehicles for each, that's half a million. This assumes no overtime. So the total for the first year, two million five hundred and eighty-four thousand, and ongoing is one million seven hundred and thirty-seven. That boils down to, the ongoing is sixty dollars a month. The two hundred and seventy-five we're asking for is twenty-three dollars a month. You can't go to P-Dubs and eat dinner for less than that. Twenty-three a month. You could double it to fifty, forty-six dollars a month, and you're still paying twenty-five percent less than what we paid the sheriff's office. We can't afford to contract with them. We're not going to get the service we get with what we've had. I've been here twenty years, and, um, it is twenty-three a month. And, but I wanted to go through the assumptions just so you kind of had a, you know, a feeling of, um, where they got that, where Alex got that. His name's Alex Alva. Um, FYI, I have yard signs in my vehicle. If you would like one, grab me when we're finished here, I'll get you one. I'm not charging for them, they're free. Um, you'll start, the T-shirt is twenty dollars, and I forgot order forms, so I'll do them. If you want a T-shirt, find me, and I'll get your information, or Merrily or Janelle or anyone wearing one of these. Oh, yeah, I kind of forgot that. Yeah, the proceeds go to the police department. Um, signs are free, and hopefully you'll start seeing some big banners here momentarily. But, okay.
I think there has to be a public service campaign that makes people realize that if we lose the police, we don't have a chance, we'll never get them back. We will never have police. If we lose it this time, it's forever. You know?
And there's something that, um, on that note, you might hear people say that, oh, well, if this doesn't pass, we'll lose our police department. And what I worded in the letter, and I'm going to send out some postcards here, we don't lose the department. The department is mandated by LAFCO. We'd have to go to a local area of formation commission. Um, they're the ones that established, uh, Stallion Springs back in seventy-two, and they said, okay, you got these eight departments. It's personnel that are going to go, and if they go, we can't get them back. We're not going to get anyone back, and we're really going to be in a world of hurt. I don't, some people will say, well, there's no crime here. My next-door neighbor, well, not current neighbor, but back, well, it was two thousand and six, he didn't live there, they bought it to manufacture and distribute. Uh, there's a big issue with drugs. Your chief, Chief, um, Stanbridge told me, if we lose our police, the biggest thing, the biggest jump he sees happening here is property crime. That we do have drugs in our community, sorry to say, money, and they will come on our properties and take what they can see. And he thinks that's, that's what's really going to happen. And before I come over there, anyone have any questions for me on what I just filled out?
Isn't that a semantic difference between the people and the department?
It is. I'm just, I'm, okay, I'm an, I spent my career as an engineer, and so I get really, really kind of anal on some things and a little too precise, but yes, it is semantics.
Bill, if I may, just so we don't get too far ahead, going back to what you were saying as far as the, the funding for the contract services. The Bear Valley Springs Police Department had a police committee. A lot of the information that they did is online, you can go to their website, and again, I think it was mentioned that two point four, two point five million dollars and all the staffing. But a key point is that's just for the bodies. So, so currently, if we were to have a massive incident where we require some additional resources, such as a helicopter, a K-9, a SWAT team, or anything like that, how much does that cost the Community Service District today? Anyone?
Zero.
Sixty thousand for them to respond?
Yeah.
Currently, we do not get charged anything in a cent. With the contract, you are billed in addition to. All the personnel that come, that could be anywhere from four to ten thousand dollars or as high as what you said, per incident. Again, that's the tax money that you're paying for that goes to the county that we don't get. There was also some information that was going out saying that we can pull people over and get additional revenue from that. That is illegal, and you cannot do that. Plus, the Community Service District does not receive any money from any citations that we do. So for instance, CHP, if they were on Pellicia, and they cite someone, goes to the county. If you're in the city of Tehachapi, and you cite someone for that same violation, as long as they have everything structured correctly, they do have money that goes back to their agency. Because we're a Community Service District, we don't have that option. So again, that's misinformation that's going out there. We cannot do that. We cannot tow vehicles. We are a non-enterprise. We cannot make money. That is illegal. I will go to prison.
Thank you, Bill. Um, I'm Larry Chamberlain, and I'm a member of the local CERT, uh, structure here, that's Community Emergency Response Team. Normally, we have a spokesperson for them, that would be the CERT lead, Dave Cox. I would like to remind everybody that CERT is, our sponsoring agency is the Police of Stallion Springs. And we are exactly what we say we are. We are a community emergency response team. Uh, we have responded without charge to the fire last season. We provide parking for that event that occurred the last Saturday, Oktoberfest. Uh, we provide parking and organization for all the people that come in from out of town and here locally, without a sponsoring agency. Oh, by the way, lost children, uh, the chief can call us up at a moment's notice, and we have a mobile, what we call the, uh, the mobile response vehicle. We can bring it out, and we can have radios available, and we can send out search teams to support the chief. Without the chief, without the depart, without the personnel here, we would not have a sponsoring agency, and we would also go away. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Again, circling back to what I said, so everyone in this room, were they here last year when we had the wildfire? Okay, so with that, and oftentimes, our residents do forget that, who is doing the evacuations? Is it the fire department or the police department? Police. We organized everything with our command center, again, with your professional team, as well as our volunteers. We had Kern County Search and Rescue, Kern County Sheriff's Department, Bear Valley Springs, believe you have in Tehachapi, PD was there. We had, and forgive me if I'm wrong, if I forgot anyone. Again, how much did that cost us? And Kern County, of course, Kern County Fire. We didn't get charged anything. When we are gone, you will be charged. Because again, you have to look at it as, anyone who's taken on our services as a police department, they are assuming the liability, and that comes at a cost. So either, you're going to pay one way or another. But just, that's another thing is, we have a group of volunteers that have been with us for almost twenty years, that we've developed these relationships with. And again, they do still have an option of looking for another sponsoring agency. I do want to make that clear, but it's probably very, very small that they will be taken over by anyone. So again, it's the, the relationships that we have built together as a community. We're just... We are just caretakers of the community.
A question, Chief. What is the percentage breakdown of the types of crimes that we have in Stallion Springs? Say, just year-to-date.
I would say primarily substance abuse issues, alcohol-related issues. In my monthly board packet, there was an individual who currently has six, maybe seven pending cases, I think on Kern County records, if you know his name. And again, by law, we can actually post people's names. I choose not to do that. By law, if it's a misdemeanor, you can no longer show pictures and things like that. I don't wanna make people guilty by public opinion. But this individual has all these cases by us. And it's abuse issues, elder abuse issues, child abuse issues. We have had word that he has been dealing several different types of narcotics throughout the area. And because of our staff, we are resilient and go after people nonstop that are affecting you. Because these are the people that are in our community, and he has five cases. After this last case, he's actually still in jail for once. But normally, we send, we have to go to Laredo. Does anyone know where Laredo Jail is currently? It's not gonna go anywhere, of course, Laredo. But it's on the other side of Bakersfield, it's about another twenty minutes on the other side of Bakersfield, in North Kern County. Now, there is a jail in Mojave, but there's certain criteria that have to be met. So oftentimes, we can't go there. Sometimes, we do go there initially, and then we still have to drive to Laredo. So that's one-way, two hours plus. With this individual, he was often out before we even had our report done. So again, now they have held him, but this is someone who has five to seven cases, felony cases, that are walking the streets. And I have had conversations with people, and they think he's a nice guy. Because again, we don't know what people's business are, right? You can't look at someone and say, that person has a substance abuse issue. Sometimes you can. Or is a thief, or is a felon. But again, everyone lives here. We want people to be the sixth world. And I actually put this individual in prison fifteen years ago for breaking into houses in Stallion Springs. Ironically, I'm going on a tangent real quick, but there was a laptop, we did a traffic stop. This was before those Eagles that you've heard in Big Bear became popular. A woman in Stallion Springs had her, she was a seasonal resident. Her home was burglarized, everything was taken out of the home. We do a traffic stop, we think, this is odd. We see this, we are able to track it down to the resident, finding out the house was burglarized. Again, it was a buildup to things. For people who have substance abuse or even alcohol issues, you have to feed that habit somehow, right? Oftentimes, it's family. If it's not family, it's you, the community. And it's all reciprocal. Tachpy's very unique on how we're geographically set up. But this individual has been one of those individuals, unfortunately, he was affecting this community. That's why you have us. We know who he is, we hold him accountable. But if, again, if you don't have that knowledge base, more of that is going to be coming into this community. And I'm not saying that as scare tactics, I'm just telling you, if you look at other areas, Boron, Rosemont, areas that, Sand Canyon, Old West Ranch, those areas that don't have police services, I ask you to ask around about those places, and you'll be educated on what goes on there.
Thank you.
One last thing, just to kinda answer your question. I am gonna try to send out some postcards here. The folks here, you see here, were an advocacy group. I can advocate, I don't work for the CSD. I'm not part of any of the departments, I'm just Joe Citizen. And so, we can advocate, they can't, by statute, by law, they can't. And the lawyers that helped the CSD have gone through some of what they've written. And you can't say that, you can't say that, you can't say that. I can, I can tell you, this is twenty-three dollars a month. That's what it boils down to, eighty-nine cents a day. So I do wanna get out some postcards and letters, or whatever it takes, trying to get people to understand that you can vote yes or no, but you really gotta understand, if we lose the police, the choices, you're not gonna like. You're not gonna like what happens. And somebody raised their hand in the back.
A lot of people, they own one or two lots. And they're saying that's two seventy-five times three, plus the fifty. So that's over a thousand dollars about, if they own a couple of lots. So, and then, and everybody and their families are gonna vote against it, because they said it's ridiculous. And some people are saying, like, somebody owns five acres, and they have a million-dollar home, they're paying two seventy-five. But if you own your house, which is three hundred thousand, and then two-thirds of an acre lots, you're paying three times as much as they are. So why is that fair? And if it fails, because I remember when the fifty-dollar thing went through, at first, they had a ballot measure, I think it was for a hundred and fifty dollars. And they said, if you don't pass this, we're getting rid of the police. And it failed. We didn't lose the police, and then they put the fifty-dollar ballot on there, and everybody passed it. So I wanna know what the plan B is. If this fails, like, in the November election or next March, are you gonna have a new ballot measure? Maybe you'll reduce it to a hundred and fifty?
Plan B?
Actually, let me answer that. So, partially. So, again, it's per parcel. So those residents who are a little bit well-off, who have four thousand acres, nine thousand acres, those type of things, per parcel, they're not, they have to pay per parcel. They're not paying less than a person who only has one parcel. No. No. So they're paying their fair share.
No.
It's whatever the parcel is.
Yes. It's per APN number. Does that help? Per APN number. So, part of what you're alluding to, sir, is correct. If I own a home in Stallion Springs on a two-and-a-half-acre parcel that has one APN number, it's two seventy-five. You are correct. Two, right. And that is the way the law is written, the CSD has no control over that. No. We can't say, if you, if you're, it's not based on assessment value, is what I'm saying. So if your home is valued at five million, but you know somebody whose home is valued at three hundred thousand, by law, we can't fluctuate that. It has to be a set rate, because it is a special tax, and falls under special tax law. Through the public safety's research, that is not an option. We are asking for the bare minimum already. It is very hard to pass. No, sir. There are other loopholes through the law that residents can step up and petition for something, which I think Bill would probably be able to share with you. But, and I don't wanna speak on top of Chief, but Chief and his sergeant, they have been operating on a shoestring and a wing and a prayer for quite a while now. They are exhausted mentally and physically. They cannot keep this up much longer. So the way that the election cycle goes, the way that we have to go through the processes by law, it's gonna take too long, and we will not have officers here. Right. Right. But at least there's a goal. At least there's a, you know, something at the end of the rainbow, right? Yep. Yeah. Everything is going up. You are absolutely correct, and that's why we're in the situation that we're in. Yeah, I mean, just like you, the CSD is operating within the state of California laws. Just like you, we have to abide by the laws too. And the statute said that this is the process that we have to go through. We don't have the authority to just tax you. It has to go to vote, by law.
And we also have to go through that process, the two eighteen process. And again, if it doesn't pass, I was here when that original vote failed. Same time is, again, you don't know what people are going through. Again, it's extraordinary. It's true. And again, I wish I could've come to you at a better time. I had no idea that my staff was going to leave. I haven't said this publicly, but I'm gonna say it to now, and it's gonna be controversial. If it doesn't pass, I'm resigning. And you can replace me. No, I know. California has caused a lot of strain on us. Personally, professionally, I get it. And I hate to say tax, but again, do you know where your tax money's going? Generally, like, do you know where your tax money's going on a day-to-day basis? Possibly? And this is a local tax, this is your money invested in your community. Again, it's a bad time, I understand that. But the reality is, we have exhausted all options. There's no other alternative. So again, I'm replaceable, I'm being humble, I have had offers for better opportunities. I'm doing this because I love you, the community. I'm invested here. But again, I'm trying to leave here with a feather in my cat, saying, my power to try to have this continue if it's five, ten, or twenty years, at least it lives beyond me. But we can't afford a contract. They have to use their own equipment, they can't use our aging infrastructure. I mean, it comes at a cost. Some of it goes back, so SLEF money, the hundred and eighty-six thousand, that has to go to law enforcement services. The community service district has to look at, you know, other alternatives for police? No.
No, no, sir, that's not what I said. The only money that we are required by law that comes into the district is the current special tax of fifty dollars per year per parcel. By law, that has to be used for the police department. That's a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. The rest of that money is currently being pulled out of the general fund, which pays for all the other departments in the district as well. That's the only money that is not labeled or allocated, if you will. So at the end of the day, if we have no police department, the only question, and it would have to, I'm sure, go all the way through the courts, and they would have to tell us what the legal process would be, is the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That's the question, what would happen with that money? And I don't have the legal ease to answer that question for you.
And again, the community service district would have to look at moving that money. Again, you still have an unsafe department. Again, working with two people, it's not right. And again, the liability, if anything happens to my sergeant tonight, it's on me. Right, but like the things that we mentioned, we know our residents, the good and the bad, and everything in between. We know how to de-escalate things. But again, we have to invest. That's the problem, is we have not invested. And again, I'm saying this openly, this is not advocating, I'm just saying fact. Really have we done our job in totality of investing in our department? Now, again, part of that is our responsibility, right? We should've come to you five, ten years ago. Back to the matter, it didn't. We're here today. I don't know where this is gonna go. But at the same time, you know, you, the voters have to be educated and make the best decision that you possibly can. But we need people to come to these meetings. People are not coming to my likeness. And again, it's all about education. I don't care if you vote yes or no, I just want you to get the facts to make the best decision for you and your community. Because again, this is beyond us. So again, I encourage everyone that's here, please share this with your family and friends and neighbors. We only have two more meetings.
Larry Chamberlain again. I'd like to remind everybody and anybody that's watching this Zoom meeting, it has been described that we are at the end of a very long cul-de-sac. Currently, we have law enforcement present at the end of this very long cul-de-sac. They don't have to come from Mojave, from Rosemont, from any other location. They're here, and we need to improve it. We're isolated out here, and we need local enforcement.
I wanted to talk a little bit about, I'll call it Plan B, or whatever you wanna call it. There's something called a citizen initiative, and I haven't really dived into it too deeply. I looked at something that Fresno County has. Basically, just citizens, you know, you gotta go through some applications, and petitions, and whatnot. And the thing with that is, if you do get that, whatever it is, some measure you want on the ballot, it's fifty percent plus one, not sixty-six. And that's what I wanna look into. If this measure goes, we vote, and they say, oh, you didn't get the sixty-six percent, you got sixty-four and a half, sixty-two, you didn't quite get that. Okay, fine, now we need to go do this citizen initiative. It won't happen in this November, but it would be November of twenty-six, I think. I just, I haven't got all the details on how you go about doing that. Now, if it comes back, and it's only forty-five percent yes, or something like that, that's very unfortunate.
I do wanna remind everyone that this is the best deal in Kern County. You may not see eye to eye, but again, you're looking at it as, when this is passed, at six hundred and thirty-nine thousand that you have decided to say yes to, we are still the lowest in Kern County. the lowest in Kern County. How can we deny that? Again, I'm not telling you to vote one way or another, I can't. But this is your future. Your community, your control. It's not just a badge or patrol car. It's us coming in at two o'clock in the morning to someone who's been a victim of domestic violence, or who's been stabbed. Those things are happening in our community. Not every day, but they are happening. Did you know that we had the most suicides per capita in two thousand and ten in the state of California? You don't think this affects people? Did you know your police chief went to a, a retreat for first responders who have to deal with PTSD because of the things of the job that he had to deal with, with the California Highway Patrol and here in Stallion Springs? This job takes a tremendous toll. And if you don't think that it does, talk to other agencies. If you don't support it, that's your prerogative. But this is about you, as a community, having your voice. And your voice will be heard, one way or another.
Any more questions? You sure? Yes, sir.
You better have a gun on you, 'cause that's what's gonna, that is what it's gonna take. You'll get all the bad apples coming in and taking what they want. Keep the police.
Any more questions? Chief, you have any closing comments?
Again, I, I, I thank everyone for taking the time to, to listen tonight. Again, I really respect everyone in here, and a- answering, uh, or, I'm sorry, asking those good questions, those hard questions. It's a hard reality, folks. I wish I was in a better spot. It is a uphill battle, but I feel confident.
I wanna encourage everyone, too. We do have a few more town halls coming up. There is a schedule on the table here, if you'd like to pick one up on your way out. And the questionnaire that we talked about earlier, if you'd like to fill that out, it is completely anonymous. You don't put your name or anything on it. It's just giving us an idea about the pulse of the community a little bit. Um, not only about the police department, but how you like to receive your information from the CSD. Do you like websites? Do you like email? Do you like social media? Questions like that are on there. We're trying to improve the way that we do our outreach and our communication with the community. Um, so, I guess Bill has one more thing.
Just one more thing. Um, if you do want a yard sign, I'm parked on that side of the building, and if you would like a shirt, uh, hit one of us up. When we wrap it up, I guess we're wrapping it up now.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Enjoy the sunset of Stallion.
Thank you for all your time.